Agenda, first item on the agenda is the open work session for the poultry houses. Lennox, I know you're here, thank you very much.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. In your place this morning is a discussion draft dated March fifteenth, which is very simply an update from your last discussion. When we met two weeks ago, you went over an outline with us of considerations if you were to look at additional regulation. The format before you really only includes questions, suggestions that were made at the time, they're identified in bold and in brackets, and those are the only changes from last. It appeared in retrospect that most of the attention was given to the landscape section, and so there are some additions in that as well. We have not made any changes from the menu, as it were, of setbacks and separations, and we will look to your guidance on those and any other issues you like.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lennox. For a council discussion, based on what we have in front of us, are there any questions that council members have or any recommendations that they might have? I know when we last discussed this, part of the discussion was trending towards what actual distances we would want to see, what actual setbacks we'd want to see established, if any. And of course, we had suggested that the council members take the opportunity to visit the local chicken houses to see, to get some idea of what they felt distances were correct, whether it's 200, 400, or 500, and what numbers they felt might best address our concerns. Since that time, having had that opportunity, I've just been looking for input from any council members as to how you may like to change what's been presented, or if you are pleased with what we have in front of us now.
I see, I see one thing I don't...
Grab your mic, Joe.
One thing here is the earthen berms, that's going to be cost inhibitive to be put those up. Most of the dirt that's used that comes out of their ponds are using for pads, and tandem-loaded dirt's about $275, $250, and it would take thousands of those to build an earthen berm, depending on where they had to be built and how long they had to be. So, I'd like to see the berms taken out.
Any other comments from anyone?
I'd like to see a 500-foot setback from the property line, and that would eliminate the need for a 200-foot setback from the state centerline of the state county or town maintained road. And I think the 500-foot setback is, would make it a lot more reasonable all the way around.
You're suggesting Councilman Hall, 500-foot setback. Now, let me clarify one point. Before you, you have the agricultural rural district, and you have the designated growth area. So, there are two separate areas in which we're establishing different, possibly different parameters. So, are you suggesting the 500 feet in both or one of the other? Councilman Hall?
Frankly, I'd like to see 500.
And you're saying, again, that this is something that you'd like to see from the property lines opposed to the nearest residential dwelling?
That's correct.
Okay. That would be number two on A1 agricultural.
If we did a, could we get the amount of land it would take if we did a 500-foot or a 400-foot, could we get some kind of a chart of the amount of land it would use on a typical farm, say with four poultry houses around it?
I think it would depend on the configuration of the parcel.
Well, that's correct, you know. So, we need, we would need to know. I mean, 400-foot is a lot, 500-foot's, you know, more, and I'm just wondering if it's going to, it's going to take a lot of the property that poultry houses would be allowed to be built off, out of the market.
My concern with Mr. Hall's suggestion is if it applies in both A1 and the designated growth area. I think part of our strategy here is stricter regulations in the designated growth area to protect residents who are there who are more residents of the designated growth area. And it doesn't make sense to me to have, you know, the strict protections designated growth is supposed to be. Part of the secondary effects of these regulations, maybe if you have strict regulations in the designated growth area to accommodate members of residents, that it would drive some of these houses more to be your, to operate the district. So, if you have the same setbacks in both, you can reduce it. Plus, more, the heavier the regulations you put on, the more it encourages denser growth because the necessity to build more increases too. So, I mean, that's my concern with having the same in both.
One thing I saw the other day when we took our tour, it's not every, just like you just said, depended on the lay of the land, I guess. Not every farm's the same. We went to one farm that basically he didn't need any buffers, he didn't need any setbacks because his poultry farm was built on a small rise in the middle of a swamp. So, there was no, there was no need for any buffers, there was no need for any setbacks. Jack, how can we devise this so none of it's set in stone and it can be reviewed by a committee? And I was, my thoughts are the right-to-farm committee, because that's what we have, is that's what they're for. If somebody cannot build because of these setback restrictions, they're being denied their right to farm. So, how can we devise this? You know, every farm's going to be different, depending on the lay of the land, the trees. There shouldn't have to be buffers if there's a forest next to it, there shouldn't have to be setbacks if, you know, it's land that's designated to never be built on. What can we do to put in, into this bill, something that makes it flexible?
We've tried to include in the landscape, in the vegetated buffer requirements, some flexibility in the additional language, which has been added. It may not be required immediately adjacent to property with an open space, agricultural easement, or actually when landscaping is in effect, either, and this is an important point, are we discussing on the site, are we including adjacent property? And there's some instances where there is a pretty good forest stand on adjacent property. We can do that with the landscaping. With the setbacks, I would just suggest that you be as specific as possible, that a setback is in place from a property line, from a street line, unless, and then cite that, rather than make it too discretionary at the time. I think property owners who are looking, prospective property owners, need to have some certainty. Here are the standards, here are reasonable standards, here's what you can expect. And I'd say the same goes with adjacent property owners as well, so that they know what to expect if they do their homework. As far as the, having a committee look at this, any committee on a site-by-site basis, I would just caution you about making it too discretionary and then opening up the appeal process from there as well. Specifically, the ag reconciliation committee, that has not been their role in the past, that is not what they were set up to do. They deal with complaints, as you mentioned in an earlier discussion, it's an interim step between there and, and circuit court. That is not their role currently, it would be a significant change. That's not frankly what those folks signed up for.
Well, I understand that, but I think if somebody owns a piece of land and they think they should be able to build a poultry house on it and they're being denied that by these rules, that that'll be a good complaint.
That's true. If you did want to leave open that option for varying setbacks, for example, and I'll get a little geeky about zoning here, if you pick a setback and say it's 100 feet, and then you think there's something unique about your property, and this could be for anything, for our homes, for example, you could go to the Board of Appeals and apply for a variance. Variance criteria technically is very hard to meet. You could write in, though, a special exception procedure to vary setbacks.
I think that would be a good idea.
And that would end up, in that case, going to the Board of Appeals. So, in this case, it's not a special exception for the use as a whole, it's a special exception to vary a dimensional requirement, and that can be done.
How does everybody feel about that?
I'm curious how it would be written.
What could you come up with, Jack?
After listening closely to the consensus of the council, you know... I understand, I think I understand what Mr. Holloway's saying. We have, you can have setbacks that generally apply under general circumstances, and then leave in specifically a provision for unique circumstances associated with that property.
I'll give you an example. Okay, we have a farm, we have, we have two farms, two parcels of land. Father lives on one parcel, his son lives on the other. The son, the son wants to build poultry houses, but the setbacks restrict him because of his father's farm, but his father says, "I'm okay with it."
There's also situations where a family farm may choose to put a particular part of their farm under a different financing mechanism. And so, you would have what, from all appearances, is a traditional family farm setup, you know, the house and the poultry associated, and you may have a lot line. That's a circumstance where you do want to make some, have some accommodation, because that's just for business purposes.
But is that necessary for us to write into any type of legislative bill? That's already part of the process, isn't it? Special exceptions?
Not a special exception for a setback.
Okay, maybe that's the wrong terminology. Is there not terminology already in place to allow for an appeals process?
There is terminology in place to allow for variances.
Variance, thank you.
However, the criteria for meeting a variance, and the board, and very honestly, this is not just a, do you like it or don't you, you know, hands up or hands down, they have to make certain findings. Findings for variances are very restrictive. So, if it's your intent to allow some flexibility, again, a slight trick is putting in the code that there's a special exception to allow to vary. It's not technically a variance.
But if we create any type of special exception to allow for any variance, you're going to have liability day in and day out. Everybody that's going to come here is going to say that there is favoritism given in one instance and not in another. I just think when you start getting into such gray areas, you open yourself up to incredible exposure for liability.
I would suggest you make it as specific as you can, as far as your expectations.
Well, I mean, Sir Lennox, this is how planning and zoning works. I mean, this isn't a new thing. I mean, you know, planning and zoning committee, we talk about special, you know, exceptions to this, that, or the other. I mean, this is not, this is not open enough, this is not new. This is something that happens, I wouldn't say on a daily basis in your office, but on a monthly basis, I would say, in your office, in, when it comes to a store or, you know, something like that, not, not farms. So, there's ample precedent for that, for this sort of...
I thought, though, that you said that we could not get into special exceptions in reference to this.
I cautioned the use, to say, "It's okay to have the use if you're subject to special exceptions." That's what I cautioned you on. Hearing the request for how would we craft some flexibility on setbacks, you could put that in as a special exception to vary the setback if you meet certain criteria. That can be done. I would just ask you to be specific about the criteria. Mr. Holloway has expressed some. If I could just respond to Mr. Kilmer's observation about planning and zoning commission. The city code is set up when the commission looks at comprehensive development plans that allows the commission to modify standards. That is similar. That's a city provision in shopping centers. We don't have that marked in the, in the county, but we could do something similar.
In this bill specifically?
Sure.
That may do it, yeah. That may work.
On the vegetative buffer issue, I'm definitely in favor of the three rows of plants, you know, you know, as in legislative language. I have had some people express concerns about specifically saying, you know, this row has to be this, this row has to be that, you know. Someone said deciduous trees, you know, half the year, it's not going to matter, you know, they don't have leave, you know. So, you know, essentially not micromanaging what they can do. I mean, I think probably the furthest row, evergreen trees, I think that's probably good, but the other two rows, you know, what I've heard, that there might be, it's need for some flexibility because of, you know, what might work best on the property and what, you know, what sort of plant. So, don't micromanage the plants. I mean, you can require the, the three rows of vegetated buffers, but, you know, the first and middle row, I don't know it's necessary to spell out exactly what they should be. So...
Sure, the criteria, as mentioned last time, was borrowed from nearby jurisdiction, and that's why it's out here, it's for us to discuss. The additional flexibility is, is appropriate. I think we would probably have that landscape plan done by a qualified professional, that's another phrase that leaves us with some flexibility, to make sure it's not somebody just saying, "Oh, I got some trees out back I'm going to use." You know, there are folks out there that we've seen who provide technical advice on what the best types of plantings are in certain areas, and we could leave the flexibility to make sure that a professional does that plan, and that we have that flexibility in review.
I think, I think one of them did mention that they have some guy, that they have that looks into research with those plants and makes sure they are able to provide that service that they're looking for.
Right, the marver poultry industry has, has someone that they work with, and I'm sure that there are others as well who are, who are qualified, and we can incorporate that, that sort of standard.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes, sir.
Could we go back to the other question that, I think, I think there was a path identified, and could I read that back to see if it was the path that you all are thinking?
Okay, sure.
Specifically to poultry houses in the agricultural district. Poultry houses are a use by right, that is, a permitted use in the agricultural district. Am I right so far, Jack?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about allowing a special exception in the agricultural district for poultry houses, and the special exception would allow variances or setbacks with specific and specified circumstances. Again, poultry house is a use by right in the agricultural district. The district would allow for a special exception to apply only to the variances in setbacks, and those variances would be limited to specified, that means defined by you and the ordinance, specified circumstances. Jack, is that what you were...
My only ques, that's correct, Mr. Kramer. My only clarification is, does the council want to limit that to the agricultural district? How do we deal with designated growth areas?
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get closure on the ag district, and then there's, and then there's the debate on, should it be more restrictive?
Very good, thank you. Yes, in relation to the ag district, that, that's what we had discussed earlier.
Is that what you were, is that what you were proposing?
Essentially, yes, sir.
And that's, that's consistent with, with planning practices and zoning practices?
Can I, can I go back to Councilman Holloway's...
Mitch Holloway. For the folks in the audience.
Comments regarding these setbacks? I just did some quick math, want to be sure that I did it right. If, if you took a 20-acre, if you took a 20-acre farm, that's 871,200 square feet. And let's just, to make the math simple, let's say that's, that's 1,000 feet by 870 feet, right? So, if you've got, if you've got 2,000 feet on two property lines, and you've got 871 feet on the other two property lines, that's 3,742 feet of property line. If you take a 500-foot setback on all four property lines...
You can build a half a chicken house.
That's 438,371 square feet. Rough math is, that's 10 acres. So, you've taken a 20-acre site, and you've reduced the development capability to 10 acres. I just wanted to do that math to give a little bit of perspective to how we set, or how we propose to establish setbacks.
And Wayne, your, your measurements there, they might be fine, depending on how the land's laid out.
No, no, I understand.
They could build all the poultry houses on one, one corner and have enough setbacks from the road or other people's houses, but if you don't have flexibility in this, it's going to lock them in to that circle that they've got to plant them right in the middle of that property.
Right, I was just trying to, yeah, I was just trying to get into the ballpark. Okay, typical 20-acre parcel, if we do a 500-foot setback, assuming that it's fairly regular in terms of its configuration, how much density is being lost in terms of the ability to develop?
And one of the farms that, the group I was with last week visited, the setbacks were intended to be farther back towards the rear of the property, but that turned out to be hydroric soils and couldn't be built on, so it was, the buildings were moved closer to the road. That's another soil types and other things on the, on the property are going to be restrictions possibly.
Another reason why we need flexibility.
Well, I mean, going to your point, Wayne, that's why I think it would make sense to have, you know, reduce setbacks in the agriculture district outside the designated growth area and not have special exceptions. I mean, you're, I think you're unlikely to have the need for special exceptions out of the designated growth area. I mean, there should be less of, in the designated growth area, there's not as much forest or, you know, preserved land as there is, I'm assuming there, you know, as there is, you know, say out, you know, down Antico Road or whatever. So, I mean, it makes sense, you know, to have those sort of special exceptions and reduce setbacks in the ag district outside the designated growth area, and then maybe, you know, just because there are more neighbors in the designated growth area, to have the 500-feet setback.
Sure.
So, that's, you know, again, that's kind of why I'm hesitant towards your, you know, applying to everything.
I understand.
I have a couple of short questions. As I mentioned earlier, I've been trying to educate myself, and that's why I took this tour, and I've been trying to do a lot of reading and doing a lot of listening. These poultry houses are CAFOs, are they going to have to go in front of planning and zoning for approval?
No.
No. I just wonder if that should be a thought to consider. I was told that one of the CAFOs in the pipeline is being built in the metro core area?
There's at least one that's in a designated growth area, and that one is in the metro core.
Is that appropriate?
Zoning allows poultry houses, if you have 20 acres, in that particular district.
Is that, is that what we were discussing the other day, Mark? Okay. These manure sheds, I tried seeing if there was anything in there. The manure sheds for storage, are they lined or are they built with concrete floor?
Clay. They put clay floors on them.
Yeah, I understand the clay too, but I don't know if they, if they're additional.
I don't know.
I think the, the manure pad cement.
The pad outside.
Just the pad coming out?
Yes.
But not the shed itself?
And it's covered.
Well, it's going to be covered too, so, I know that was one of the questions for consideration.
Well, the house, the much chicken house is re-toured, we asked the farmer that, and he said, "Yeah, the shed was lined," so...
With clay?
No.
That's what I understood.
I thought there was something underneath that, but maybe that'd be something to ask the farmer or Satterfield, I guess he might know.
Who is going to look at these plans when they're submitted and make, to make sure they're within these designated setbacks and the buffers?
That would be our office as we deal with both zoning and billing permits simultaneously.
And another question, I've been reading there's 100 permits in the pipeline, is that true?
They're certainly not in my office. My understanding is that there are a large number that are either with the state for erosion sediment control or in stormwater.
But your office has not seen anything yet?
No, we don't, right now, honestly, we don't have a single one pending right now, as the, the one you've talked about most is, is in redesign right now.
Okay.
Getting back to your outline, Jack, starting with the agricultural rural district, the first item on the list is a vegetated buffer defined as attached. Mark had suggested that the deciduous trees are not necessary, council's opinion on that, trying to make some decisions here. I'm not quite sure, and Jack, it may help if you were to notify the other jurisdictions, I did not do that myself, to find out exactly why they bothered to put that in there. Sounds like there must have been some reason that they picked that particular terminology, which I had never heard of before until I read it.
Right.
And I had to look it up to see what the heck it was.
Means the leaves come off.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Annually.
Maybe they want it to be pretty in the fall, I don't know, but I was curious as to why they, they use that terminology and they pick that particular type of tree, but there may be some very good reason why they did that, root structures, I have no idea what it might be. But is council okay as far as the, what has been defined as the three rows of vegeta, vegetative buffers? And the distances that have been established between each of those buffers? I'm assuming that the distances were simply listed more as a way to maintain the health of the trees and the ferns, but I want to make sure everyone's okay with this.
I want to make sure it's trees that's available to be bought.
Yeah, I mean, I would say take out A and B under number one, and just, again, that's up to some flexibility for those three rows.
I'd like to yield to Matt Holloway and hear his opinion on this.
Thank you. You're looking at the...
The buffers that I've seen actually consist, a lot of the existing buffers, older buffers exist of multiple rows of evergreens. You don't see many with deciduous trees involved. I'd like to know why they decided to put deciduous trees in there, but I agree with Mark, if we took out that mandatory deciduous tree, you could still have the spacings in here that lay out why you should, could use deciduous trees or how you would put them in, but I think allowing somebody to do three rows of evergreens would be just as effective.
Okay, maybe if we just changed the middle row from shaw to may, in case there is some type of...
Just take out A and B, you don't need to do may, I mean, may's implied, I mean, you can do deciduous, I mean, just have three rows, but make sure the last row's evergreen. Take A and B, then they can do evergreen, they can do shrubs, they can do deciduous trees.
Why was this put in there? I know that there's a farm near May that has those kind of trees, they had the evergreens and the deciduous trees. Bill, do you, do you know why they are done that way?
Bill May or Bill May?
Either one.
Whoever says like, if you come to the...
The answer is no, I do not know, but we have on our staff a fellow whose full-time job is to get buffers planted on chicken farms, and he has 40 years of experience in landscaping, he's been doing this with us about 10 years, and there are reasons why deciduous trees can be put in and are good, why tall grasses, don't forget about these tall grasses that come back year after year, that'll grow taller than me in one season and do an excellent job in visual sheltering and containing the dust, the feathers, the odors. So, there are reasons why trees are planted on certain properties, and some of it has to do with the grower's preference. Maybe he wants to see flowering trees in spring, maybe he doesn't care. But I would, yes, I wouldn't, if you're asking me, I wouldn't be too specific on what type of trees or plants you want... on what type of trees or plants you want in the buffer because it may not meet everybody's needs.
Thank you, thank you, Bill.
The other day, when I took a tour and we looked at the evergreens and there was some discussion on that and I asked about the new houses being put up and I asked about some fast-growing trees, because some of those evergreens will take several years to grow and block or do the job it's supposed to do, and there was some discussion on the fast-growing trees.
And when they get so tall, they fall down.
And replace them.
Yeah, so you have to start over. So, maybe that's why the deciduous trees are put there, they don't blow over as easily as the evergreens do. I know these Leyland cypress, you get, what, fifteen years, ten years, fifteen years out of them, they have a tendency to blow over, snow gets them or whatever.
And that was my question, I wonder if deciduous trees were the fast-growing trees that some are installing.
So, so Mark, you're suggesting that on this second page here, under the vegetation buffer shall be installed as follows, number one, would remain a minimum of three staggered rows of plant materials, and then you're saying to, at this time, eliminate A and B and just say that C, the row furthest from the poultry shall consist of evergreen trees, correct?
Correct, yeah, give flexibility for the other two.
Otherwise, talk to them.
All right, now, what I would suggest, Mr. Lex, if you could, find out, because I'm sure a lot of thought went into A and B before that was put in, find out if you could, maybe what the strategy is for A and B and we can revisit it if necessary.
Should we include Mr. Satterfield's suggestion about the fast, or the tall grasses?
That's in, whatever.
I mean, they're allowed to do that, I mean, there's required. It would require a buffer and then, what works best for soil.
Right now, we're just saying that there's, had to be three rows and the outermost row has to be ferns. We'll wait for Mr. Lennox to get back with us on the, on the more specific details. The second part under the first page, agriculture rural district, which states four-hundred-foot setback from any legally established residential dwelling, I believe that Councilman Hall had said that he would want to see five-hundred-foot setback from a property line, which of course would supersede this. What is council's preference as far as that's concerned, establishing, in other words, instead of a four-hundred-foot from a dwelling, establishing a five-hundred-foot setback from a property line? You heard, of course, Mr. Strausberg's comments on the amount of land that would consume in twenty-acre farm. Any comments, four-hundred feet from a property line, we establish it from a property line or a dwelling? I think if you try to establish it from a property line, you don't have to worry about where that dwelling might be, and it's much easier to identify. We wouldn't have to worry so much about reverse setbacks either in that consideration if you were considering property lines only, but we need input.
I'm fine with keeping it four-hundred feet setback from legally established residential dwellings in the growth area. I think anything other than that gets into the issue of, you know, it really does restrict these in the agricultural district where we would prefer to see them instead of the designated growth area. I mean, again, you don't have the same standards where people are going to be as opposed to where farms are going to be.
What if, what if there's no dwelling?
If there's no dwelling, then it's just, it's the property, it's the property line setback.
Hundred foot.
Remember the language that is in there for discussion that says, or approved health department dwelling location? That was Mr. Joe Holloway's suggestion last week, that if you had previously subdivided lots but not yet built upon.
Right, you got to protect those.
You have to protect those rights.
Okay, so we're looking at four-hundred-foot setback from any legally established dwelling with a hundred-foot setback from all property lines, is that correct? Okay, what about the distinction of distances from fans? It says, you know, in this case, four-hundred-foot setbacks from a dwelling, but a five-hundred-foot setback if the exhaust fan is faced in that general direction?
You know, from what I saw from them fans, I don't know that they have that big of an impact, they blow down toward the ground. Are they that much of a concern to make a change or is it the noise that we're concerned with?
Well, might, might that be something to have in designated growth area, have something like that, that sort of specification, a greater setback, depending on how the fans are pointed in the designated growth area? Maybe deal with that issue there?
Well, if we were to deal with that issue, I mean, Joe's point, if it is as valid as, you know, if it's a valid point, he's saying that the fans blow down, I haven't had the opportunity to see that in action or to know just what degree of odors are created or dust or particulates are emitted.
And the ones I saw were in the back away from the main road and I didn't see any residential dwellings around them.
I, I think that's the practice, I mean, so it wouldn't necessarily hurt to codify it, especially in the designated growth area.
Okay, within the agriculture area, are you saying then that we would maintain it four-hundred feet from a residential dwelling and that's it, is that correct? And the, where it's being qualified as far as the fans or schools or churches or nursing homes? That's not going to be an issue in the ag district?
I think do that in the designated growth area, restriction.
All right, then, the suggestion has been made on number two, that the only item that remains in number two is the first sentence.
First sentence.
Yes, okay. This is where we're heading, all right? Item number three on the agricultural rural district, minimum of two-hundred-foot setbacks from the center line of a state, county, city, or town-maintained road. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
And the minimum one-hundred-foot setback from all property lines? Everybody in agreement with that?
How can you have a two-hundred-foot setback from the center line and only a hundred-foot setback from all property lines?
Well, in, in practical application, the greater of these would apply.
More restrictive for.
Yes.
I would be okay with more of a hundred, than a hundred-foot setback from the property lines as long as we do have some flexibility in this bill.
What would you want to see, Joe? This is in the ag district, keep in mind.
Yeah, I know, I'd, I'd, let me think, Joe, how restrictive would two be or is that too restrictive?
Your example was a five-hundred-foot setback.
It was a five-hundred-foot setback, you want me to redo the math?
Well, that took ten acres out of a twenty-acre.
That took ten out of a twenty.
So, you're like a net loss of four acres, ten acres? Four acres.
Now, now, keep in mind, I'm saying as long as we have flexibility in this bill for people to, to do the, are we calling it a special exception, is that what we're calling it? Yeah, yeah.
I, I like the idea of two hundred, I'll tell you why, because we also want to try to protect property values of surrounding agriculture areas, not, not developments, but maybe, maybe the person that owns the farm next door to this chicken house would want a little bit more distance, a hundred feet is, is nothing. And if you own the property next door, you may feel restricted as to what you might even be able to do with your own house, farmhouse, so I think maybe it would benefit property, maintain property value protection for the surrounding farms.
So, you're suggesting change the minimum to two hundred?
Yes.
Well, do you need to change the minimum to two hundred or two-hundred-foot setbacks from the center line of the state? Basically, they say the same thing.
Excuse me, Joe?
The item number three says setback from the center line and item number four says setback from the property line, so just to make it a lot simpler, wouldn't you be better just to say two hundred feet back from the property line and eliminate the two-hundred-feet setback from the center line of the state?
Yes. Well, it's referencing a road, I mean, you could just.
It's still a property.
You could say this. Have a look.
Have a look.
By clarification, the two-hundred-foot setback in the example I gave would change it from ten acres to four acres of unusable land area.
Bob, are you taking all this in?
I'm writing all day.
Well, I guess, I guess, you know, I'm kind of thinking this is going to go to you next, where are you at on this? About planning and zoning, I guess, but it's still got to go to his.
Yeah, the hundred-foot setback, I think is actually a little too small because once you put this buffer zone, you've got trees that could fall on the house or trees that fall on the road in ten years, and I like the two-hundred-feet better. So, I mean, the ones that we saw were four hundred, were also very attractive, you know, farms yesterday, so, you know, I wouldn't want anything shorter than two hundred.
Okay. So, John, we are striking three, the, from the state and county, city areas?
Two hundred all the way around.
Right. If you think that's suffice, Jack.
It would suffice, if you're, if you want a minimum two hundred from all property lines, that would include the right-of-way line. Yeah, so you, so you need to leave the center line in.
No, he's saying that we.
No. So, you, so you want a two hundred from the right-of-way line? Go property line. And you actually just pushed it back a little bit further from the road as well.
We did.
Right, it's a lot easier to measure as well.
Mr. President, point of clarification, in, in these setbacks we're talking about, the four-hundred-foot setback from any established residential dwelling would trump two-hundred-foot setback from the property line if there's a dwelling there, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody understands that?
Right, right.
So, if there's a dwelling, then it's four-hundred feet, if it's, if it's empty field everywhere or forest, then it's two-hundred feet.
With the special exception provision, Mr. Joe Holloway talked about, and should we talk about reverse setbacks too? I know that that's been important to some.
I don't know how you. I don't think you have to. They'll have a chance to oppose it, they have the property owner, if they have to come in with their special exception. They'll have their side heard, right?
They would be notified, they would have the opportunity to be heard.
Right, right.
The most this is going to do, Mark, is compromise a two-hundred-foot distance and actually, to be quite honest with you, from reverse setbacks, if a person wants to put a development there, it's going to be up to that developer as to whether he wants to get any closer or not. This restrictions on the poultry houses, that developer could put his house within three hundred feet of that poultry house. If he were to really want to do that. So, we've moved to three, we have three and four combined to just number four as a two-hundred-foot setback from all property lines. Designated growth areas adhere to all minimal, minimal standards prescribed with the one district, minimum of two-hundred-foot setback, all property lines, right-of-way public roads. And were we going to, in the designated growth area, transfer the alternatives in reference to fans, schools, churches, and nursing homes, were we going to incorporate that section into the designated growth area?
Should you?
I think so, but really, we need to get rid of number one, right? Because we're changing the standards.
You need to get rid of number two. And because that issue would be covered under number one.
Redundant. So, we would leave number one, Jack?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
Okay, I'm at, and will we be dropping the entire section, alternatives, five-hundred-foot if exhaust fans faced away from the dwelling, six-hundred if not, setback from schools, church, nursing homes, daycare centers, mobile parks, subdivision, ten or more homes?
Can I just note that, that I'm not sure why I worded it the way that I did?
Okay.
Because it, it says under the worst case is that the exhaust fan is faced towards the dwelling, under the best case, it's away from the dwelling. It would seem that if it's away from the dwelling, then your setback is four hundred feet. Do you see what I'm saying? Or that four hundred feet doesn't mean anything because they all have exhaust fans.
Well, as I read this, Jack, it says that four hundred is what we're establishing.
Right.
But if there's a fan, if there's a fan involved, it's going to be five hundred.
Correct.
Six hundred if it's facing a dwelling.
Well, we know that they have fans, they all have fans. They do now, but.
No, not all sides have a fan.
Correct.
Not all sides, we're talking about whatever side might be.
Whatever side.
Yes, so if the side of the exhaust fan is facing towards a dwelling, it's requiring six hundred feet, if it's facing away from a dwelling, it would be five hundred feet.
So, the minimum. Your chicken house would be, have to be a hundred foot wide.
I'm confused enough, Joe. Input, do we want to drop that section down into the designated growth area?
Yes.
Okay, do we keep the wording of the five-hundred exhaust fans faced away and six-hundred if not? And there's a five-hundred slash six-hundred setback from school, churches, et cetera. What's council's?
Same thing, right? We'll deal with exhaust, you just didn't.
It's.
Sure, it, it's also providing for a setback from schools, churches, nursing homes, daycare centers.
Based on the direction of the fan.
Right, because, well, no, that it would provide a setback, a setback, because if you don't, then it's, you don't have a setback like you do from a dwelling. So, in number two under A1, you've established a four-hundred-foot setback from a dwelling. Should be a setback from those other sensitive receivers.
But the distinction between the five-hundred and the six-hundred.
It could just be four, it could be four hundred, you could include that, we could include the schools, churches, nursing homes, daycare centers, mobile home park, subdivision of ten or more homes.
In two.
In two.
In the agricultural district.
Just include it?
Yeah, just include it, a four, so the four-hundred-foot setback from any legally established residential dwelling or pre-dwelling or blank, blank, blank.
Because those don't fall under that umbrella.
Right.
Okay.
Because you don't want chicken house two hundred feet from the school.
So, that'll be.
So, under A1, we need to, to move those other uses, put those back up there.
Right.
But it'd be the four-hundred-foot setback, but then it would have an increased setback depending on the fans.
And you're suggesting that.
In A1 or designated growth area?
Well. I think if there's an existing school or church or nursing home in a growth area, you won't have a setback from it.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, do we want that eliminated, do we talk about applying it to both or just the stricter ones to the designated growth area?
We've got those things out in the A1 district now.
If, if you're going, if you're going to afford that level of protection to those land uses because they are those land uses.
Yes.
The protection would be the same if it were in the A1 district or in the designated growth area.
I think if you're, yeah.
Because of the need for the additional protection because of that land use.
Sure, if you're going to give that kind of protection to a single residential dwelling, I think we have to give it to the others as well. We do have situations of care homes out in the county, certainly schools, churches everywhere.
So, actually, what we have just done then is we have established the same regulations in the A1 district as we have in the designated growth area right now.
Correct.
Everything's the same.
Except that in the designated growth area, there are burms required, Mr. Cannon.
Well, we haven't gotten that far yet, thank you, thank you, I understand, thanks.
That somewhat defeats the purpose, it's designated growth areas to have stricter rules to protect it because it's more highly populated.
You can increase the setbacks then in designated growth areas.
Well, that's what, that's what I thought we were doing originally, but then we're applying the increased setbacks in the designated growth area to the A1 area, so that's, I'm saying, it's typical what we had before, keep these increased setbacks in the designated growth area to protect the concentrated mass of people, and then that might encourage, you know, secondarily, more location of these chicken houses out to the ag district. So, if you have the same regulations in the ag district as designated growth area, why not be on Levin de Shiel Road is, you know.
Sure.
Middle of nowhere, you know, two miles outside Parsonsburg.
Well, I think the idea is.
I don't consider Parsonsburg as the middle of nowhere.
No, two miles outside, two miles outside.
I, I think what we've established, Mark, is that the four-hundred-foot setback and the five-hundred and six-hundred are acceptable restrictions and therefore acceptable in the A1 district. The question might be, do we choose to become more restrictive in the designated growth area?
I'm just saying, if you're.
What's, Jack is saying, you can't overlook the fact that if there's a school or a church nearby, you can't, you can't place less restrictions just because it's in the ag district, you still have to.
How about we recognize those uses?
Okay.
But we keep it at a four hundred foot setback in the A one district.
That's, that's a decision we can make today. It's whether or not you feel five hundred is necessary with a school or church or whether four hundred is sufficient.
I, I think we leave it at four hundred in the A one district for all these uses. And then down in the growth area, it's a five hundred or six hundred foot setback from all those uses.
I agree.
That way, it's more restrictive than the growth area.
Okay. So, we're going to, you're suggesting four hundred foot setbacks in the A one district under all circumstances and five hundred foot setbacks under all circumstances in the designated growth area?
Five hundred or six hundred too.
When you say all, all, all circumstances, you're not talking about property lines. You're talking about.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, just in the.
Established against those uses.
Just in that section too.
All right.
Yeah.
And then the A one district or outside the designated growth area has the exceptions possible, but designated growth area does not.
Growth area.
Did you hear that, Jack?
I, I heard that. I'm not sure your fellow council members heard that.
So, so, so no exceptions in the designated growth area because it seems to me that there's less need for exceptions there because there's not, you're not really supposed to be protecting land in.
You're, you're saying no variances?
No variances.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I, I think there's too many, I think there's too many, I don't think we should restrict the variance thing in that because you don't know what's going to come up. You really don't.
Well, I guess, I guess if my thoughts are correct, that there's not much, you know, protected land, the word would apply, then the variance, if we have it in, it wouldn't hurt anything anyway.
It wouldn't. Maybe not. You're right.
Okay. Variances everywhere. Is that right for that? Okay.
So, what are you doing in the designated growth area?
Designated growth, growth areas, five hundred to six hundred.
Depending on the family location.
No special exceptions.
Depending on. No, no. They are going to have special.
There, there will be variances on both, Jack.
There will be variances.
There will be variances.
Yes. The file, the, the, one other item we have, as Mr. Kramer suggested, we still needed to review, was the earth and burms in the designated growth areas.
I think if you do earth and burms, you're going to not have to worry about putting chicken houses in the designated growth area anyway, right? The expense is going to be too, the expense is going to be too high.
Well, well, either that or we're going to get thirteen or fourteen houses on that location.
Well, I'd, I'd rather see, I'd rather see if you're going to do anything in, in the designated growth area, increase the vegetative buffer if you need to. But earth and burms are just, they use the dirt out of the, out of the stormwater ponds to build the pads with. So, that means we're going to have to go in and buy dirt, build these burms. I don't see the need for them.
Is, I, I don't know about whether it is cost prohibitive. I don't know.
Would Bill, that would be.
Bill, would you know that whether it's cost prohibitive, the earth and burms? If you don't mind, thank you.
I imagine it is. I heard a number of years ago, when the state started its stormwater management program and requirement to have drained areas and the ponds, there was more money to be made in moving dirt than growing chickens. I suspect putting up burms.
No, that, burms are going to create a runoff, more of a runoff because, yeah, coming off the burms.
What is the purpose of a berm?
Site.
To hide the farm. I don't know. I guess a visual screen. I don't know.
Yeah. Is that a DPI standard?
No, I'm not aware of any county requiring any burms around chicken houses.
But you got, if you got a berm, you got water that can't go this way or that way over it. Water can't run up over top of it, so.
Seize your stormwater map.
Yeah, yeah.
Strike it.
I mean, if, if you want to increase, increase the vegetative buffer to make up for the berm, I don't know whether Jack sees that as being necessary or not, but I, I really think.
An extra layer, like another row of vegetable buffer?
That's, that's, I don't, I don't think so, but that's a, you know.
That does bring up one question. All right. It appears as if the interest is to strike earth and burms. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Getting back to the very first, number one, it says a buffer defines around all active portions of the poultry operations. What's that definition, active portion?
Goes to the top under definitions, poultry houses shall be defined to include.
No, the active portions.
That's active. That's, that would include everything in the definition. Buildings, structures, appurtenances, including fans, feed bins, litter storage, manure sheds, incinerators, composters, and cold storage.
Does that mean that the burms have to be in the front, the sides in the back?
Well, the planting would have to be.
The ferns would have to be in the front, the sides.
Vegetation.
Ferns.
I mentioned ferns.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Vegeta, I did. I said the wrong, sorry.
It's okay. The deciduous trees, the. They would, yeah, they would need to be everywhere except for the provisions we wrote in.
Right.
That says, except where you don't need them. But the buffering is not just to the poultry house, it's to the.
All the stuff that goes with it.
All the structures.
Operations.
Right.
All the structure.
So, this is going to completely enclose the farm other than the road?
Where it's needed, correct. If it's not existing vegetation, either on the site or immediately adjacent.
Okay.
Okay.
And to be clear, this is going to go through planning and zoning, so we can.
And public comment.
Yeah, yeah. We can kind of work through some of these issues. We're going to, we're going to get a clean draft, hopefully, and then we can kind of see where it is and, and then it'll. This is not the final word on this.
Any other comments, questions? Jack, now, I guess with Rachel, I think this would need to come before the council in the form of a bill. I don't think that it, yes.
I have one more thing to talk about.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
You, make sure you get your mic.
I know we had a bill introduced on the first of March. And there was great concern from the poultry companies about, about this bill. It's a roads bill. Basically, it's, it's, it's a bill that's left pretty open. They have started doing fifty and sixty foot entrances to these farms. So, the trucks can go out at a angle so they don't have to twist on the road. Should not that be included in here, Jack? There, there, I mean, the poultry companies are, are willing to do this. And then this would, when this bill comes up, we'll know that this is in this poultry house standards situation. So, when they build a farm, that, that their entrance way is going to have to be fifty or sixty foot.
Mr. Holloway, the, the, the trans, the traffic study, if it was determined to be needed, would take the fifty or sixty foot driveways into consideration?
Understand, but shouldn't it be in this, in this draft for our poultry operations?
If you know that you want to require fifty or sixty foot entrances, then we put it in.
I think we should.
And remember that, that other code that you're going to see in two weeks for pub, two weeks, couple of weeks for public hearing, doesn't, isn't restricted to poultry.
I understand that.
Right. So, that'll cover other things as well.
So, we could at least reference.
I mean, I mean, both Purdue and Mount Air had no problems with that. They thought that was a good idea. And that keeps from tearing the roads up when you turn out on them.
This is a industry issue. And I think the industry has addressed it and said this is part of their plan for building chicken houses. So, do we need to incorporate it if it's their standard?
We only talked to two poultry companies. There's other poultry companies. And we know one, we know one that don't really follow the rules like the rest of, or follow the ideas like the rest of them do. So, I, I, I think it should be put in there.
Well, and if it impacts our public roads, I think it would be necessary for the code too, so.
But isn't that not something that would be, see, because the, the one thing about that bill is that there's no really clearly defined areas.
Correct.
I mean, there are no parameters established in that bill.
It, it just gives.
Outside of the discretion.
It just gives the authority to require some, some professional look at things.
Totally at the discretion, totally at the discretion of the department.
Yeah.
And how can the, without, I mean, is it the department that's going to accept that practice of the forty to fifty?
Well, my thoughts are maybe if we get this in here, we wouldn't need the bill.
Well, and, and the fifth, the entrance and exit, I mean, that's part of zoning. I mean, that, isn't that under the zoning code in terms of entrance and exit, entrance and exit on property or?
It's, it's not, we don't have anything that defines how, defines very much at all about poultry house development, alone the width of the driveway.
But like with residential, I know there's a, what, a fifty foot?
It's not a subdivision though.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, there, there's precedent in, in, in zoning to have a fifty or one hundred foot exit, you know, that kind of stuff.
Sure. That would show up in, in either in a zoning code or a subdivision code.
Yeah.
It just happens we don't have that standard right now. And it's the width of the road and it's the radiuses.
Right.
So, we have to be careful how to define.
You need that codified here or is that something?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's just if we're doing zoning here, it would make sense to include that, like Joe says, in this because it is a zoning matter.
Well, we can, but again, we're, we're only doing like, you know, we're just kind of like throwing this out there and there could be.
We'll put it in the draft.
There could be much more.
I, I think it needs to be put in. Because we're going to get this other bill and I think maybe this other bill can disappear.
We'll hear what the public has to say.
Yeah.
I'm just more concerned about how you, how you deal, you know, what, what, where it's, where the best place is for it to fall in line with what you have.
I'll talk with Public Works as well and talk to Weston and see how, how he suggests we incorporate this.
John, John, don't worry about Jack. That, Jack's the expert. Jack can make all this, all this work.
Thank you, Mark. Okay.
He, he, he's going to take all this, all this stuff we said, make it look nice and, and, and make sense, right, Jack?
And everything will be fine.
All right.
The interest is to put it in there for now and see, see how it plays out. I, I agree with it, but I just don't know if this is the proper place for it.
Well, we're doing everything else zoning wise here, so.
Let's get back to what Mark had said, trying to set up an incentive to be out in the A one or a disincentive to be in designated growth area. The only difference we have is a hundred feet out of all of our things that we've done here. We have just, instead of four hundred foot setback, we have a five hundred or six hundred, depending on the direction of the fans.
Correct.
Is that all we want? Is the distinction between the two or? I know, I know burms could be too expensive, but additional vegetative buffers, I, I just don't, I feel like there should be some other disincentive.
So, I, I guess we need to really decide whether we want, do we want poultry houses in that, in that district? You know, are we going to restrict them from that district? I mean, if, if we make it too restrictive, then they're not going to be there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, and again, not, that whole district isn't the same.
I know.
You, you, you live in, don't, in most of your farm in it or close to it or some of it?
Close to it, yeah. We tend some in there.
Yeah, so.
There are some very large land holdings in the designated growth area.
And we have to remember too, that it's going to be a hundred years before that area grows out.
Yeah.
So, we have to allow property owners the use of their.
Their land.
Their land until then.
You know, as an example, on Gumby Road, there was two or three large poultry houses that were farmed there for probably forty or fifty years. And they were finally tore down. There's a development where they, those homes, where those poultry houses were.
Right.
So, it does evolve. I mean, it, that's not like if these poultry houses are built in this area, they're going to stay there until for five hundred years. They're going to disappear probably in fifty years or so. And depending on where the market is, it's like what happened with those poultry houses. The fellow made more money. He said, I tried farming for a couple of years with poultry and I decided I was better off to build houses on that property than farm that property. So, I think, you know, depending on where the market goes home wise, I mean, there could be chicken houses there five years from now, seven years from now. Somebody might just tear them down, build new homes, so.
What, what would you like? What, what do you think that you'd like to recommend in the designated growth area?
I just don't know. Maybe a, a more enhanced vegetative buffer would be a reasonable ask for those property owners.
That's fine. Yeah, I'd be all right with that.
Instead of three rows, five rows, you know, something that just makes it more substantial. You know, because these are, if they do pop up in that area, we want to make sure that the surrounding property owners who've built houses where they were supposed to build houses in the county aren't punished for, you know, living there, so.
And you want, I mean, I think it's, you do want to protect property values in the, in the designated growth area.
Right.
And a chicken house could certainly compromise that, a poultry house could compromise it. I don't know if someone putting up five buffers, five rows of buffers, three is very adequate.
Sure.
I don't know if five may sound like it's more, but really not create much difference in, in the enhancement of the property.
Guy selling the trees, I think so.
Yeah. So, I mean, I mean, Matt's making a very good point. Is there anything that council would like to see as far as the designated growth area? Going to, going to greater lengths to protect property values in the designated growth area?
I'd be okay with more buffer. Is that, is, is that something that would?
Can I suggest something that maybe we need to either have that commission, the agricultural commission, or somebody look those over in that area? And I'm going to give you a good example. Down Pemberton Drive, there's several farms that I've talked to Jack about that are in between. We'll take Pemberton Ponds and Sleepy Hollow. There's forty acres there that could hold three good chicken houses even with your new regulations. And, and that happens all the way up and down Pemberton Drive where there's good, long fields. So, maybe you need to go ahead and have a group take a look at these and they are approved on a per request basis. I, I agree with the berm being too expensive to do it.
Well, you do have a member of the Coastal Association of Realtors on there, so their input is important.
Good wide, you know, variety of people.
Even the one from Worcester County.
Even the one from Worcester County. Hopefully, yeah, once it is. But, you know, there's so many different properties. And as you say, I don't think we can write laws to protect on all of them, just like they're in there. You know, let's go back to the one on, on Levinde Shield Road. Right now, it's a fairly rural area, but city water and sewer get out there, which is a strong possibility sometime. You're looking at the most developed piece of property in the county right across the road. And that could hurt their value as well as anybody else's value that would be part of that.
So, should we include variances in the, in the growth area as well as the?
Well, you have to for unexpected circumstances, I think, Jeff.
Part of it.
Just for unexpected circumstances.
I mean, so are you suggesting maybe they should be prohibited in the designated growth area, but they can apply to planning and zoning commission, let's say, to be allowed in those areas? So, it would be a prohibited use, but there could be an exception in that area.
I'd have to rely on Jack to say, well, it should be prohibitive and then a special exception or be exception or, or allowed by a special exception, so.
Basically, that's the same thing. If they're.
That's why we're politicians.
Yeah, yeah. It's essentially allowed by special exceptions, but it's prohibited except by special exception. So, yeah.
So, we decided, it's allowed by special exception, which means it's not listed under the inherently permitted use. It's not listed somewhere over here as prohibited. It's allowed by special exception. And if you can meet the criteria, and that's a public process and a county appeal, you could make it by special exception in the designated growth areas. I suspect.
What criteria?
That's the key.
No, I'm saying that you could make it by special exception in the designated growth areas. And that alone will be the biggest deterrent to poultry houses in the designated growth area. Because they, they will, prospective developers of poultry houses will look elsewhere. Because they don't want the uncertainty of the legal process.
Is that what the executive supports? Or should we just think about it?
I would like to see us think about this because this is something that's come up new and let Jack and you all, we talk.
You, you need to hear too, I suspect, from the property owners who have invested in the growth areas and find out what their interests are. Certainly, as we know, property owners, all of us included, will like to have both options. If we want to develop, if we want to develop, and we want to preserve, we want to preserve. They may have to choose a direction now.
Well, that's a good point, but I mean, that's what, that's why there'll be public hearings in reference to this when it gets to the planning commission. I think that we need to come up with some idea of what we want, what we want to see done here.
I agree. You, you need something for folks to respond to.
Right now, we are not making any changes. What's the council's desire?
Could we have Jack drop a list or a bill based on what we discussed today? And then one based on the allowed by such, special exception in designated growth areas and see what that looks like? So, we can look at the two and kind of get a better idea because I don't know exactly what that would be.
Well, there, there is nothing to it except for whatever Jack defines as the criteria, and we don't have criteria.
Well, we, we would set the criteria. Is that correct?
There is, there is standard criteria for special exceptions and it has to do with traffic and disrupting people's property and public facilities to support the use, and those are the findings they have to make.
But still.
If there's something additional that you'd like, then you can put that on, poultry houses.
But there's, there's something else that hasn't been addressed yet. And that is the circumstances under which the variances could be considered in the A one district and/or in the growth area.
We will drop that.
Yeah, because we need to. Yeah, 'cause we need to cut.
You'll draft some recommendations, Jack?
Sure, well, yeah, I'll pull together something, and I'll, just loosely, that has to do with bulk requirements in zoning.
Okay.
What you're discussing now in the, regards to the designated growth areas, is the use alone. Do you want to have discretion about whether or not that is a permitted use, or if it's a use permitted by special exception? That's different than the criteria that Mr. Joe Holloway suggested earlier about setbacks.
What's council's desire?
Well, like Jack said, if it's, if it's done by, um, special exception, that's gonna, that'd pretty much kill it, right? There probably won't be any applications for poultry houses in the designated growth area.
They will go to the ag district, right?
Yeah. I, I think there's something we need to think about, I mean, we can't make a decision right now, that's kind of a whole new wrinkle than what we've been considering.
Well, outside of Jack's recommendation that we talk to property owners, which I'm not sure how feasible that will be, no offense.
Public hearing, is what I meant, I thought for sure that you would hear from folks.
But I mean, in order for us to make that decision now, before it goes to public hearing, how are we going to come to any different conclusion in two weeks than we are going to today?
Having time to think about it? And maybe, I mean, people will contact us, I mean, people haven't been shy about contacting us about this issue in the past, certainly won't be next two weeks. We can't just make a decision like that on something that's, this is a pretty momentous change to our law, I mean, either one of these things.
Would you like us to come back with further articulation of what the special exception criteria would look like?
That'd be great. That's what, that's what Jack said he would do, and I think it's, I think it's important council see that.
I, I said I would do it for the setbacks. I, I don't know, I have not heard what your criteria is for the designated growth areas.
Or should we have a special work session between now and the next meeting, after we've thought about it and gotten some feedback, maybe next week? If we're, if we're trying to do this in a timely manner.
Well, we, we could do that.
Or, I, I actually, our next council meeting is in three weeks, isn't it?
Jack, Jack's, Jack has said, if we go with special exceptions, that's probably gonna kill the poultry industry in the designated growth area.
You've said that.
Kind of, kind of.
Okay, so, the decision we have to make now, do we wanna kill the poultry industry in the designated growth area? 'Cause if we do special exceptions, that's gonna do it.
And I guess the question also is whether or not there's enough property in the Agricultural District of Wycomica County to satisfy the needs of the poultry industry as a whole. Do they have to have the designated growth area?
Well, I think that depends on, there's a lot of property in the designated growth area that's suitable for building poultry houses on. It's probably not suitable for, well, you gotta think about this.
Not yet suitable.
Not yet suitable, and how many building permits have you struck in the past six months in Wycomico County? None, hardly, so people's not building new homes. And again, poultry houses aren't there forever, they come and go, it takes a while, but they're not there forever.
Well, yeah, I mean, and those considerations are why I'm saying, we can't really make a decision right now on this sort of thing. You know, something to think about.
Well, I'm not under the, I can make a decision real quick, I don't wanna kill the poultry industry in the designated growth area, so I would say that we need to go the other way.
I remember, I know in the prior meeting that, um, Mr. Strasburg had made the comment that it's, chicken houses are somewhat incongruous with just the whole definition of a designated growth area. You know, the designated growth area, you're pretty much looking at, um, building out retail, uh, any type of commercial, or you're talking about residential, and, you know, poultry, you know, having poultry houses in the middle of that, can some would be, you know.
Well, some people are calling this commercial. Some people have been calling poultry houses commercials.
Doesn't look like we're gonna come to any decision today, today on this.
You have, you have, maybe we shouldn't have poultry houses in the designated growth area. Well, maybe we should for a while, and maybe we ought to do it by special exception, there, maybe Mr. Kilmer is correct, and, uh, think about it for a while, till the next meeting.
I guess my, uh, real question is, to make sure that everybody clearly understands, what, what would we do between now and two weeks from now? Try to come to a more definitive answer.
My thinking is, based on what I've heard here, is that Jack could come back with, um, crystallizing the discussion that we had about the, the ag district and the designated growth area before we introduced the concept of special exception, so we could have him bring that forward, crystallize this discussion, but then come back with a separate proxy, if you will, on the designated growth area that would stipulate special exception, and what the special exception criteria would look like. And that would give you two proxies that you could consider.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, and to have that prior to the meeting, so we have some time to think through and look through it, and talk to some folks.
And Jack, Jack is gonna be away first week of April, so, uh, if you wanna have that discussion in the next couple of weeks, we probably oughta have some sort of a special work session, if we could.
Can we just cancel Jack's vacation?
Jack, when's your vacation?
Probably.
You said the fifth.
I'll be back the, uh, I'm gone that Monday and Tuesday.
The, the week of the fifth?
Yes.
Or the fourth, you'd be gone.
The first two days of the week.
Okay.
Looking at this map that was handed out with all the points of the existing and proposed, you know, I have trouble saying that we're not gonna allow chicken houses in designated growth area, and the county has a landfill in the middle of our designated growth area. I mean, literally, it's, it's right here within a quarter mile of the proposed chicken houses, so it's, you know, that's where, if I'm a property owner, and I wanna.
And I'm not, I'm not advocating cutting out chicken houses within that.
No, I, I know, I know, I'm just, that's my.
Within, with inside the old metro corridor line, Conley Mill Road, and I have a friend out there that has a farm with two hundred and some acres, it'd be a perfect place to build chicken houses.
Right.
Off Jersey Road and Conley Mill Road, but at the same time, if he came before either this ag commission or the planning and zoning, said this is why I feel it's okay, I say, go ahead and give it to him. I'm, I'm not quite a hundred years, like Matt's saying, I think it'd be developed before then, but, you know.
Is that the role of the ag commission? What is the role of the ag commission?
It, it honestly, it's not, it's, they reconcile complaints, existing sites, and according to whether or not something is following the best agricultural practices. You know, is, is the fence down, and the cats getting out?
Yeah, I'll explain to you what my father went through later on.
That would be somewhat different.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Tax ditches.
I, I think maybe, I mean, like Wayne said.
We can do that.
Yeah, maybe have a special work session, because, yeah, 'cause our next one is three weeks away, because Mark, you know, can't, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Jack.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much. There's a lot of progress.
Get lunch, do lunch now.
Um, I wanna, um, let me see where we are, Joe.
Could we?
I would like to, um, I'd like to address collective bargaining right now. If we could, um, if we could, we're gonna move collective bargaining up next with the gentlemen who are here now, and, uh, after the, after the, um, collective bargaining discussion, we'll have a, a lunch break before we discuss the comprehensive plans, Jack, if that's okay.
We made good progress today.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Yes, they did.
No, 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 they, they've, they've come great. And here's all the names they have prescribed within the ag district, plus all they do here, that's in the growth area. Okay, um, item on the agenda, of course, for work session is collective bargaining. Michelle, if you would all, again, state your names, so that we know, um, the public knows who are, who you are.
Um, Michelle Ennis, Director of Human Resources.
Good afternoon, Kevin Karpinski.
Good afternoon, Council, I'm Detective Sergeant Marty Fisher with Wycomica Insurance Office, I'm also the President of Colonel Laurel.
Thank you. I think the last time, um, we had this discussion, primarily, I guess, most of the issues involved the drop program, I think that was what the biggest concerns were on council. Is there any council members that would like to continue with, um, with that discussion? Or is there any other parts of this that are concerned, any council members?
Did, did, do you take the salary of a?
Yes, actually, I have a handout that directly addresses your question, and uses an example of an average salary and how it would work with our, so. This was sent to us from the actuary.
Thank you.
As a follow-up.
Is that what you, uh, Councilman Davis, is this what you were requesting, or was it? Was it salary?
Yeah, the salary from, this is salary from the insurance department, like, if, just say you took Marty's salary, and he retired, not his, but the first sergeant's salary, and they got into the drop.
We can do, we can, we can actually get examples of other salaries, this is the average compensation of.
Could you just do, just take a salary for the first part, but not the average, just, 'cause you're not gonna do the average when they retire.
No, no, I can get you another example.
I guess, um, you know, after, uh, Mr. Fisher, uh, you know, spoke last time, you know, he made some points about, you know, go along, see how this goes.
No, it just makes a certain amount of sense. So, you know, we're doing, it's a five-year contract. After about four years or so, you will have information on who's in the drop program, you'll have a good idea of, uh, you know, what their payout will be, what the entrance, interest earnings are, if the county, you know, is on the hook for them, or if the investment, so that information will be there. Um, so after four years or so, we could have an idea before the next, um, round of negotiations about how this is working out.
Correct.
So, so, a, a, and that's information that would be easy for you to pull up, provide, things like that, and we could see, you know, there's, you know, we've been told there might be five or ten people, you know, if it turns out there's thirty people in there, you know, you could tell us, yes, these thirty people, these are what their drop payments would be, wouldn't necessarily need to know their names, you know, but we could say, you know, you know, person, you know, one, two, three, four, five, you know, their average drop payment will be a hundred and sixty-five or two hundred and fifty, you know, we could find that out.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, so that'd be easy, something that would just be.
Very easy.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Dodd? Yes, um, I'm looking at Deputy Joe Q. Retiree, new hire. How much is the county putting into his retirement benefits? If he's making sixty thousand, how much, give me an estimate, how much the county is paying for his retirement?
For his actual retirement?
Yes, how much money is going into his retirement from the county?
Based on our, based on our last, last actuary evaluation report, they, he's putting in five point sixty-five, and what percentage of payroll is approximately three, four percent of his, and his annual salary.
So it says the annual retirement benefit's thirty thousand dollars.
So that's how much we're funding towards.
That's what I asked.
Yes, three or four percent of.
So that.
It's actually on, right now, because of our investment return, it's less on the employer than what the employees actually contribute.
But once he goes into the drop, this thirty thousand dollars a year will be going into his drop account.
Yes.
And nothing else will be going to his retirement.
No, he, he's frozen.
Right.
He is retired.
That's what I'll point out.
Yeah.
So otherwise, we would have to be paying this anyway, right?
Correct.
For that five years.
That's correct.
So have you decided, or found out how many's gonna go into this, if this gets approved, how many folks are gonna go into this immediately?
Actually, I have not surveyed how many, I'm not sure if, um, there's been any discussion.
There's, there's not been a discussion, because it hadn't been approved. I think the officers are all just waiting to see what's gonna happen. As I said before, uh, the officers that would be at retirement age, what we have to consider, Councilman Holloway, is how many of them are gonna retire and, and go to something else, or, uh, like, some guys that I know personally, they wanna move out of state, they have family out of state, some will choose to stay here, so they'll probably go into drop. You know, it really depends what, what their plans are. A lot of people with the state police don't go into drop, I only, I, I know of three personally that went into drop, and they benefited from it, I don't know why anybody wouldn't do it. And again, the, the big issue with drop is when you offer the COLA, and that's what we talked about, a lot of departments, uh, Councilman Kilmer was actually right, in a lot of respects, some, some jurisdictions did do away with drop, but they did put the COLA involved, and it put the percentage up at six point eight, or, or something that wasn't reasonable with the market. With the market being what it is right now with drop, with a number of guys getting in it, the worst-case scenario, I think the county breaks even or makes money, but, you know, I'm not a, an accountant, but I think that we do it for five years and see what happens. Uh, if it, if it's not feasible financially for the county, the men and women of the insurance department are homeowners, they have children here, they go to our schools, they're, they're, they're part of the community, they're not gonna punish the county. Well, you know, we'll reconsider drop, but for the sake of this contract, you know, we get it through, we see where it goes, and if it doesn't work, the next president, 'cause surely it won't be me, will be sitting up here talking to you about why we, why we can't keep drop, or, or, or to that, you know, respect, when we go to renegotiations, we do away with it if it's not feasible.
Well, I, I'm a little skeptical that, you know, about, uh, you know, a bargaining unit giving up benefits, but I, I, I.
I know, I hear you, I hear you, I think we've been fair, though, I think everybody's been fair with this, I think we've all worked well together, I, I, I don't see the animosity here that we see in other jurisdictions. And, and again, I, I think that we'll work, you know, we'll work with you, we, we did with the disability factor, we contribute to that, uh, we're, we're part of that, that trust, the disability trust, uh, and, and it's written right in the contract that we would re-meet with the county if, in fact, that the disability, uh, trust fund were to become depleted. We would re-meet, and we would offer more, that's because we're gonna take care of our people. And, and again, the council has to, you're the future, we're the future of this county, I, you know, I can't help but think, the better we make things for our employees, the more people will retain, the more people will, you know, attract. But it has to be feasible, and I get that, and, and I surely think that this contract was studied, and is financially feasible for the county at this time, so in five years, you know, we, we talk again.
Well, I'm, I am skeptical about the drop program, but I'm willing to give it a, um, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna oppose it based on, I'm not gonna oppose the contract based on.
Our, our respect.
I'm, I'm willing to give it the, you know, like you say, let's see what it is, let's get the information, I, I think I might, I would like to see some maybe requirement that we get a report of this information, you know, at four years, now, you know, so, so that we make sure to have it before the negotiations start, but, um, you know, I'll, I'm skeptical, but I'm willing to be proven wrong, and, and, uh.
No, the time will tell.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, you, you, you could be right, I mean, so I'm, I'm certainly willing to let it go through.
Well, I hope so.
I, I feel like Mark feels for the most part, I am a little concerned about the, uh, four percent increase compounded annually, and I think Mr. Holloway brought it up, uh, the last meeting, Mr. Joe Holloway, that four percent could be a little excessive with the economy like it is, and I'd much rather see, uh, three percent, I think that's much more realistic.
Raises the question, too, um, if you feel confident in whoever, whatever organization you have, whatever business you have that's investing, you feel confident in what they're doing, why would you require a guarantee from the county? I mean, you should be getting that from, from whoever you're investing with.
Well, from an FOP standpoint, and I don't have our attorneys here, nor do I have our accountant, but I.
but I'll speak just from common sense, if we're gonna go that route, then why wouldn't all parties benefit from the return? So let's say the county makes 10% or something ungodly, 9%, why would we not split it down the middle? We're investing our retirement money in it as well, you know, in other words, if it's a fruitful program, why doesn't everybody share? I think the county in this situation would make money, wouldn't be phenomenal money, but it's gonna be money nonetheless.
I'm not certain why this isn't isolated itself entirely from the county as a separate investment program.
Completely, I see what you're saying.
Yes, I don't know why it isn't.
I certainly understand from your perspective why you want a guaranteed rate, I mean, that makes perfect sense. From our perspective, it's, you know, but, yeah, I mean, but, yeah, I mean, you know, we'll see and.
I think, you know, if nothing else, this is the litmus test, we tried, the county's never had it. If it succeeds, there's a limited number of people that are gonna be in it or not, and if it's successful, then it's something we may consider implementing, you know, in the next contract. As Mr. Joe Holloway, Councilman Holloway said, rid if all the county employees want it, and I simply stated, and I know that he wasn't happy with it, but if it were fruitful to the county and they did make it, why would we not offer it to all county employees? I don't speak for them, but why not? If it's something that's making money for the county and it's a program that's successful, then why not offer it to attract and retain quality employees in the future? I mean, and if it's no good, then we, you know, we all learned the lesson, including us, because I do believe that the drop will be successful if you keep the COLA aspect out of it. And I don't like saying that because we want the COLA involved, truly.
Just a little unusual for, I mean, I can understand, you know, when the county gets involved in pensions and things like that and, you know, it's a cost-sharing process there, or an investment sharing process there, but it just is something new to me to see where the county itself guarantees a return on investment. I'm kind of, I'm really, I'm kind of baffled by that.
Well, I'm not a financial person, but I will say that Michelle spent a lot of time talking to the county's pension person and felt comfortable with the 4% return or we wouldn't have, you know, we wouldn't have included it as part of the program. So, but Councilmember Kilmer has raised a good point, time will tell, obviously, whether those financial projections are correct or not correct, all I can say is that when we were negotiating the terms, the people that do the numbers said that they felt comfortable that this was not gonna be, not gonna be a financial hardship or a financial jeopardy to the county.
And, Mr. President, one thing I do think too was, we're all in, you know, uncharted water with this collective bargaining thing as far as the council and the deputies, this is something fairly new to us, and I felt like the drop program was, and with us taking a five-year contract, you know, I thought that drop was a benefit, you know, that was graciously offered and there, and with a five-year contract, the county's gonna save, no offense, Mr. Karpinski, but a whole lot of money not having attorneys here for collective bargaining, and so will we as the FOP, naturally, it goes both ways. So it's a win-win, this five-year contract, and I think part of us, us being the membership, taking the contract was, you know, with this drop, it was something else that we could look at, because I had to, myself and the board that works with me, the elected board of the FOP, had to sell a five-year contract to people who were dead against it. I mean, when you look at the language, you'll see there's some issues in that contract that if you were in my shoes, you definitely wouldn't agree with. But the membership did and it's where we are, and like I said, last time I was here, this is the Wycomico's pay scale, this is our contract, we're not looking for parity with the state police, which they did sign a four-year deal that looks pretty good to me, Sliola got that through with the governor's office, but we're good with where we are and if the county can afford it, like I said, if we get this through, it's five years down the road before we have to talk about it again unless something catastrophic happens, you know, and that could be almost anything. If you guys call us back to the table, being the council or the, Mr. Culver's office, we're happy to come in and we've done it every time they've called upon us or you, we'll be there. This is not like, I'm not gonna name any other unions, we're not gonna, that's not how we're gonna behave, we have to live here and we have to face a sin story every day and justify what we get, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
Michelle, just a, what would be like a worst-case scenario with this drop program and the 4% guarantee, I mean, really, in dollars and cents, what's the worst-case scenario? I know it's all hypothetical, but, I mean, are we talking about pennies, are we talking about dollars?
Not be accurate, giving examples, but.
I mean, are we talking about pennies or dollars? I mean, I'm just, it doesn't seem like it's a lot of money.
From my understanding, if, from the actuaries, to make it simple, if you're not making at least 4%, then you have bigger problems than the drop program.
But if it made 1% and the county had to cover the 3? I mean, really, what kind of dollars are we talking?
They actually gave that example here.
We maybe talked about nothing.
If we made none, based on this example, if it happens, the trust earns zero per year during the five-year period, year one, you increase your pension expense by $100. Year three, increase by, your pension expense by $700, and then by year five, increase by $2,000.
That would be five years of 0%, right?
Yes, making no money.
But before then, we would have fired whoever else was there.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they're gone.
Okay, okay, all right.
What's the figures if we go to negative interest rates? And don't say that that don't happen because it's happening in other countries.
Would you permission not approach just for one clarity?
Sir, the podium's probably good, Captain, if you don't mind.
Sir, just sitting there and listening to the one fact that I think we're missing with the drop is the fact that when someone enters the drop, their percentage of retirement freezes on that date. They don't gain any more percent. If someone would continue with the sheriff's office for five years not being in the drop, they would gain another 10% on their retirement for life versus the monies that they would put into the drop and would be invested and whatever percent that would gain, they would pay. So the offset of when someone goes into the drop, the fact that their retirement percentage freezes at that point and never, ever increases versus them staying for another five, seven, eight years, because we don't have a cap on our retirement, that money will be offset, I think, more than enough to cover for the drop.
All right, thank you, Captain.
I mean, yeah, but you also start drawing retirement five years earlier, I mean, so there is some offsetting depending upon life expectancy and, I mean, it's not quite as.
Not quite as simple as that, exactly, but in light of that, that reminded me too, something when I sat in my class, it also allows the agency to plan on future hires. So let's use Captain Richardson, I don't know his salary, but let's just say he goes into drop and he goes, it's possible that we can hire two or three deputies at his salary with him going. I don't know his salary, but it is possible.
And it would take two or three to replace him.
Possibly, I would agree, or more.
I don't think he heard you.
He's just, he's not acknowledging it, but it is true. What it does, it opens up the door, we get rid of the top-heavy stuff and we can bring in some younger recruits. You know, even at my salary, you could bring in maybe one recruit or two.
Yeah.
But it does, it opens the door, it gets guys out the door that are gonna stay because there is no cap on retirement and it opens up some attrition in the agency so we can start bringing some young people in.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you, guys. Entertained a motion to recess for half an hour.
So move?
Second, all those in favor? Recess for half an hour.